Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for November 21st, 2017. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. I'd like to start off by doing introductions. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, to my right is Commissioner John Hutchings. We have the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, and we have the County Manager, Ramiro Chavez, and the Clerk of the Board, Labadida Bomar. Sorry about that. So we're here today to hear two public hearings, and we'll start with the first one, which is the Public Hearing to Receive Testimony on the Fiscal Year 2016 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as CAPER. And so this purpose of it is to give the opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the Fiscal Year 2016 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation, otherwise known as CAPER, required by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. So there's a signing sheet in the back for those who are in the public who wish to come to testify, and I'll call you up just in a few minutes. You'll have about three minutes. We'll use that clock right there on my left, your right, and when you come forward, you'll have, like I said, three minutes, and when it gets down to three, there's zero minutes, then we'll hear a little "ant" sound. But for those who are in midstream of thought, or have some, or falling up on their last words there, I'll let you finish it off, and then I'll ask you to kind of finish. With that in mind, I'll have Mr. Gary Aiden, who is from the Public Health and Social Services Housing portion of that department, give a background information, and then I'll turn it over to the written testimony portion. So Gary?
Thank you, sir. Gary Aiden, Public Health and Social Services. As you indicated, this is a CAPER. Is that better?
There you go, perfect.
As you indicated, this is the CAPER report, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for 2016. Federal year 2016 for us begins on September 1st, 2016, and ends August 31st, 2017. It reports on the amount of money that was spent by the county for that time period, and that total amount was $504,213. For the home program, the Home Investment Federal Partnership Act, it's $214,910 was spent on projects with Habitat for Humanity, Homes First, the Thurston County Housing Authority Single Family Rehab Program and Program Administration, and under the Community Development Block Grant Program, we spent $289,303, and the total, those projects were included the Cota Waterline Replacement, the Tenino Boys and Girls Club, the Navigation Support Program operated by Interfaith Works and Program Administration. Total 392 individuals benefited from these projects that were spread throughout the county, and happy to talk about any other issues or address any questions. We have not received any public comment on this project.
Any way, email, phone?
Nothing.
Okay. Any comments on the CAPER?
No, I want to thank you for your diligence in making everything work, because I know it's more complicated than it seems to folks that might be viewing this right now.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And the Tenino Boys and Girls Club was included in that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. I have no questions.
All righty, with that in mind, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody on the signing sheets? No? Okay. Any final comments? No? Well, then we'll just go with motion one. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
To move to second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So what is the pleasure of the Board, is it to accept or do more analysis?
Now, I move to accept the Fiscal Year 2016 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department to submit the document to Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, as stated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So the next public hearing we have is the transition to public hearing considering authorizing an increase in property tax revenue in both dollars and percentage for the current expense, road, conservation futures, Medic One funds, and certify to the assessor the total amount to be levied by the regular and road property tax levy, and identify an amount of funds to be shifted from the road levy to the county current expense levy for 2018. So the overall purpose of this public hearing is that Thurston County is seeking public input on proposed revenue sources for the 2018 midterm adjustment of the 2017-2018 budget. And so we also have a signing sheet in the back there, also for three minutes, and as for those who are signed up, I'll call you forward, and you speak on behalf to make your testimony once it's timed. So in the meantime, I'll ask Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager Budget Officer, to give us some background on this particular public hearing proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a PowerPoint, and I'm looking at a blank screen.
That's a great PowerPoint.
Yeah.
It's been easy to put together.
We actually took our time, and it's a great PowerPoint.
Very good.
Denise went to get someone to turn it on, and then she did not return.
Okay, timing's everything.
Yes, indeed. So I have one more staff person about to go through the magic door, I hope she comes back. So I, what we're doing today is reviewing the revenue. The board is required by RCW 8455-120 to hold a public hearing on proposed revenue that includes property taxes for the upcoming year.
While you're doing that, I have a question on that. When it says to certify to the assessor, can you talk to us a little bit about all the revenue and why the assessor's involved in this?
I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted by the technology going on, but ask me again.
Sure, the part where the assessor has to certify this, in terms of all the funds and the revenue, all this put together, why is the assessor part into this part of this process?
So the assessor is responsible for setting the value of the property throughout the county. They do the assessment, and the property tax is based in part on the assessment. One of the things we'll do, yay, there's the PowerPoint, see, it's lovely. So the, we'll walk through how the property tax is set, but the assessor, what the assessor does is certifies the total value and the property tax rate to the treasurer, and the treasurer then issues the property tax notice across the county.
Okay.
So that's how it all fits together.
We'll probably touch on it here in a second.
We will walk through how the property taxes are assessed.
All right.
Okay, so thank you very much to the people who got this running. So you see here on this first slide, the proposed 2018 budget, and we'll have the public hearing on December 4th on the preliminary budget, but this is the snapshot, thank you. Let's see if I can figure out how to use that in a moment. Okay, good, thank you, Ramiro. So what you see there, though, is that in almost every category of funds, the county is spending more than we're bringing in. And basically what that means is that we're proposing to use fund balance. Now, in many of the funds, like special revenue funds, enterprise funds, the internal service funds, those all have fund balances that are being used for a very specific purpose. But in the general fund, where we have a challenge to maintain an appropriate fund balance, more on that on December 4th. Today, we're going to focus on the revenues, but for, just to be aware, in almost every case, we're spending more than we're bringing in. So go to the next slide. Yeah. Here we go, thank you. So as I was saying earlier, RCW 8455-120 requires that the board hold a public hearing on the budget revenue, specifically on revenue to support the budget, and the, in particular, you have to talk about any proposed property tax increases. So we'll be doing that, and we'll talk about the levy. For the, go to the next slide, please. The 2018 proposed operating revenue for all funds, what you see here is that 115, almost $116 million is from taxes, that's all types of taxes, $82 million from charges for goods and services, there's $29.3 million in operating transfers between county funds, and $26 million in intergovernmental revenues, and $20 million, almost $20.5 billion, from other sources. We'll talk in a moment about what all those things are. Total operating revenue for the county, $273.6 million, and again, total operating expenditures that are proposed for 2018 are $294 million. So if you turn the page, here are some examples of revenue that the county brings in. Taxes are property taxes, sales tax, special revenue taxes such as our treatment sales tax, or criminal justice tax. Charges for services are things like payments from other jurisdictions for election services and road services, garbage disposal fees at the work, internal service charges, we have intergovernmental, those are things from the state, the feds, and revenue sharing, operating transfers are all internal, and then others are things like licenses and permits, fines and forfeits, miscellaneous revenue. So the next page shows us on property tax. One of the interesting things about property taxes, for every dollar paid, a Thurston County general fund only collects 10 cents on the dollar, and this used to be 11 cents. Just last year, it was 11 cents, but now it's 10. The county is basically receiving a smaller share for our general fund than we used to out of all property taxes paid countywide. We receive 3 cents on the dollar for Medic One, and for every $10, we get 3 cents for conservation futures.
What was the reduction in the 1 cent? What does that mean?
Well, really what that means is that other jurisdictions are collecting more. So the, if you think about the pie remains the same size, our slice is smaller because other slices got larger.
Okay.
On the property tax levy, this is just a quick demonstration about how we set the property tax levy. So the levy increase, you've heard me talk before about how the board can approve 1% increase on the levy. And the way we calculate that is you take the last year's highest lawful levy, there's a worksheet on the assessor's website that says what that is, and you multiply it by 1%. 1% of the highest lawful levy brings in an additional $377,000 to the county. Now, that's not very much. And when you combine that, the next thing we do is we say, how much will the county collect in new construction? So the assessor says how much new construction is valued at. This year, $491 million in new construction, that's about 20% higher than what we saw last year, so new construction is growing. You multiply the value of new construction by last year's levy rate, which was $1.26, and then you divide that by 1,000, because it's $1.26 per 1,000. So the amount of new revenue from new construction is about $621,000. Then we get to add the growth in the value of state-assessed property. That information comes from the state. Growth in value this year was $27.4 million. You multiply that by last year's levy rate, and that's an addition of about $35,000 to the general fund. And then the treasurer tells us how much will be refunded, and that refund amount gets redistributed throughout the county, so we add about $110,000. So the new grand total of our highest lawful levy for 2018 is $38,851,785. It is a very specific amount, we don't round, because the numbers are precise, and you'll see there that at no point in the calculation is the total value of Thurston County property taken into account. The next step to figure out what the levy rate is, that's where we say total county property value, which is currently $32.2 billion, and you divide the highest lawful levy by the assessed value to get to our new levy rate, which in 2018 will be $1.21, roughly. And we talk about that $1.80 cap, so we have unused levy capacity of about 59 cents.
What was it last year?
So last year's high rate was $1.26.
Yeah.
And the rate is going down.
Okay.
Okay, so that's how we calculate the levy. And the increase, you'll see that the increase in our levy is right around $1 million. That is almost enough money to pay for a combination of a 2% COLA for our county employees and the increase in medical benefits. So it barely covers, if it covers, the growing costs of the county. Next, we'll look at the trend in sales tax. Sales tax is on a growth trend. If you look back to 2007, the total sales tax collected by the county was $12.2 million. In 2018, we think we'll collect $15.7 million. In this graph, you also see the dip that is the normal downturn in economic depression. We don't see those very often, but about every 10 years, and we're getting close to a time where we may see another one. So probably not in the next two or three years, but economists are saying within the next five years, we'll probably see a downturn in the economy. Tax receipts by business type, I thought this would be of interest, just to see what is growing the strongest. The county collects the majority of our sales tax from retail trade, a little over $5 million coming in from the retail just through October of this year. Then there is a big drop, and we collect about $2.7 million through October from construction. Then there's another big drop to the accommodations and food services. We collected just under $1 million through October this year, and then everything falls under that amount and starts to drop off pretty steeply. The information sector paid $807,000 of our sales tax. Wholesale trade was just under $700,000, and all other sectors combined was about $2.4 million. And then here's a graph that shows that retail and construction is on a growth trajectory right now, and everything else is pretty flat. So we're getting real growth in retail and construction. It's in our sales tax.
How does that compare, say, to last year? Did we have that same picture last year?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is just a fun fact, we spent a lot of time talking about federal revenue and federal grants, and how can we get more? Only 2% of the revenue in the county in 2016 came from federal grants. That's about $6 million out of $277 million came from the feds, and a lot of that money was in planning. And this is for the whole county, so this includes roads, health, housing, that's another big chunk of this $6 million is the housing money that comes in, CBPG dollars. $6 million is not a lot coming from the feds. Focusing on the general fund, taxes in the general fund make up about 63% of the revenue for the general fund. The next highest is charges for goods and services, that is about 14%, and then all others drop down from there. Again, total operating revenue anticipated for the general fund, $95.3 million, and operating expenditures are proposed at $103.5 million. Now, I'll say this afternoon, and I'll say it again on December 4th, we tend to be conservative in projection for revenues, so we'll probably collect a little more than that, and then there is money always reverted at the end of the year from expenditures, but this is a pretty significant gap. So as we look to the next biennium, we'll want to consider what to do going forward to try to close that gap. In the taxes for the general fund, the biggest part of the taxes is from property taxes, and the property taxes on this slide, $39.5 million, includes the road levy shift of $1.5 million. Local sales taxes are anticipated at just under $16 million next year. We will still divert county road funds of $1.5 million, and then criminal justice funding from the state comes in at about $2.5 million, and then everything else adds up to about $100,000 in taxes. We'll take a quick look at the other large funds in the county, especially the ones with property tax, the Road and Transportation Fund. The big revenue stream again is property taxes, $17.8 million. We also continue to receive fuel tax from the state of $5.2 million, and then all other resources combined are just under $3 million for the road fund. In solid waste, surprisingly enough, solid waste garbage disposal fees are huge, we'll collect about $24 million next year. There's an operating transfer from the solid waste reserve planned of $1.8 million, and then any other revenue to solid waste is only $146 million. That's our second largest fund in the county. Public health is the next largest fund. It used to be a lot bigger before the BHO moved out, but now it's the third, or the fourth, if you count the general fund. It's the third largest restricted fund. Charges for goods and services is its largest revenue stream of $6.4 million. Then you have intergovernmental revenues, mainly contracts with the state, of $6 million. Property taxes to public health of about $805,000, and other funding of about $3 million. Central Services is an internal service fund, it's the next largest fund, and you see that we've gone from the road fund of about $28 million in revenue, and now this is, we're still in the top five funds in the county, and this one's only $14 million. So there's a big drop-off in the amount in these restricted funds, even in the top five. Central Services and Facilities Fund, the, these are all charges to other county funds. There's no external source of revenue to this fund. About a third is from property management services, about a third related to, it's called data processing, but it's all about tech, and the other third, or less than a third, from all other sources of revenue for services that they provide. The next fund is Medic One. Again, property taxes is the largest revenue source in the Medic One Fund of about, just under $11 million. The Medic One Reserve, they'll do an operating transfer of $3 million, and they have a very small amount of other revenue coming in, about $53,000. The operating transfer is worth noting because this fund is slowly spending down the fund balance, and you've heard our Director of Emergency Management talk about a future need for a levy uplift, and it would be to keep this fund solvent. Next, we have the Housing Fund. The largest revenue source is the federal funding for housing that we bring in directly from HUD. It's a little over $2 million. Then Department of Commerce is $2 million. We have a record surcharge fees, that collects about $1.3 million next year, is the projection. Housing contracts bring in $585,000, and a small amount in other for a grand total of $604 million in revenue available to the county for housing, and we intend to spend more than the revenue that we're bringing in, in the Housing Fund. It's one of the funds that we need to look at to ensure that it's got an adequate fund balance. Land Use and Permitting is the next fund. It's much smaller, it's $3.5 million, $3.4 million in total, and these are mainly fees. The building, structure, and equipment, those are permitting fees of $1.3 million. Plan checking fees bring in $742,000. Zoning and submission fees are all review fees, that's $600,000. There's an operating transfer from the general fund of $451,000, small amount of other revenue for a total operating revenue of $3.4 million. But you see the planned expenditures are about $4.8 million, and when we look at this, and we asked Resource Stewardship about this, they are bringing in way more in permitting fees than is reflected in the budget. So we'll probably midway through the year adjust that amount up. We're not concerned about fund balance just now. And the last fund in the list is Conservation Futures. Property taxes support Conservation Futures, $1.4 million, and it has about $41,000 in other revenue that's mainly interest. So total operating revenue in Conservation Futures is anticipated a little under $1.5 million a year, and the operating expenses that are currently budgeted, I see a typo there, is about $1.3 million, so just under the revenue amount. So in summary, the proposed increases in revenue that will support the county budget, here's the increases in property taxes, about $890,000 in current expense, Public Health and Veterans Fund, $31,000 in Conservation Futures, $479,000 in the road fund, and $245,000 in Medic One. You all... You also have a proposed increase in the Lake Management District, three percent for Lake Lawrence and five percent for Long Lake. And then utility district fees are proposed to increase ten percent for Boston Harbor, both sewer and water, and five percent for all of our other utilities. This budget information, as well as the entire budget, is available online, and here's our website. And the next slide, it says that the budget hearing is December fourth at 6:00 P.M. We're looking at all funds and all offices and departments at that time. And at this time, you're scheduled to take action on the entire budget on December 12th. So your options for today is, actually what I'm recommending today, is you see this resolution, and it's the one before you, that implements the property taxes and the road levy shift. I'm recommending that you allow us a little extra time. I've received no comments on this budget. So this has to be adopted by November 30. And I would put this on AIS for your board meeting next week.
Is she open for questions?
She is now.
You can ask him.
Okay. The shift of the levy, roads, of one point five million, that's going to be different than the diversion of one point five million?
Correct, we're doing both.
Does that still leave us, and then that's what we have on the one dollar and twenty-one cents left, or is that after, or is that before?
The one twenty is before the levy shift. And the levy shift adds up to, I think it's about five cents.
Okay. And then you said we had Conservation Futures earmarked to spend one point three out of the one point five? I'm curious.
That is, in the budget, we always have the amount of money should the board decide to do grants for open space or other actions with it. It's not earmarked yet for any specific project.
And then my big question is?
Oh, the parks, yes. There's money for parks.
Parks in there, okay. Is, the revenue doesn't match the expenditure by about nineteen million dollars. How do you fill that void?
Fund balance. We're using fund balance.
Well, but we don't have enough fund balance for that, so.
In which fund?
If I'm curious, citizens have to be curious.
Yes, which fund are we?
Well, in total, I mean, all of them looked like they were short on revenue versus expenditure, but the total was, I think, nineteen million dollars short.
That's correct, with the bulk of it being from the general fund. So what we're doing is we're spending down fund balance. In most of the restricted funds, that's what the money's there for. We have excess fund balance. But in the general fund, we're going to have to look and find a way to close the gap.
And that's the majority of that dollar amount is out of the general fund, isn't it?
Correct.
No, go ahead.
Typically, what is reverted at the end of the year back?
So anywhere from three to five percent of appropriation lapses or is reverted at the end of the fiscal year.
Three to five.
Three to five percent.
How much is that equal to a dollar?
Yeah, what's that mean to me?
That's about three, three to, three million to five million roughly. Nope.
No.
Nope. So we'll see this year, in 2017, we have a beginning fund balance of over fifteen million. We're anticipating ending the year at about eleven million.
Do you have another?
Well, I have a lot of questions, but I can see they're not going to be answered here in the next few minutes. I think we've got more work to do, it looks like.
I would agree.
To figure out that shortfall.
You indicated that the budget, as it is at this point, is online. Is this PowerPoint online then as well for the public, or will it be, or can it be?
We can post it this afternoon.
There's a lot of data, and I'm sure there's people, I know people here writing stuff down. I'm sure there's people at home hopefully writing stuff down. So thank you for that. And with all the sales tax revenue and such, can you, can you explain what the county gets in, for marijuana sales tax?
So the amount that we collected from the state, the states share the, their marijuana tax with the counties and the cities. And Thurston County's share was one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that amount is going to go down because the state legislature reduced the amount set aside for the local jurisdictions.
By fifty percent?
It looked like fifty percent. It will depend on how much they collect.
And do you know what the state collects in marijuana tax revenue?
Many millions. I don't know the exact number, but I can look it up.
Several millions.
Many millions.
Many millions.
Many millions.
Over twenty-five million. I think it was around thirty million.
Around thirty million.
I'd have to look and verify that.
Between twenty, okay, maybe twenty or more.
Oh, yeah.
And Thurston County currently gets a hundred and eighteen, but that has been cut, a hundred and eighteen thousand.
And that's been cut.
It's being cut. For nine thousand dollars.
I see how much.
Thank you. I just want the public to be aware, because everybody says, oh, it's a big tax revenue, and it's a big business for the, for government.
It is. It's a big revenue to the state.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I have another question.
Could you explain the eighty-five, fifteen percent split on retail sales tax for the public?
Yes. So if the purchase is made, and it's a little tricky, we'll talk about destination sales tax in a moment, but if, if you're in the incorporated area, let's talk unincorporated first, that's a little easier. So if you spend a dollar in the unincorporated county, the county receives the a hundred percent of the sales tax paid. It's about six cents that comes to the county. If you're in the incorporated cities, Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater, Yelm, Rainier, Pecota, Tonino, and you spend a dollar of the six cents that's collected in tax, eighty-five percent of that goes to the city, and the rest comes to the county, only fifteen percent in the incorporated area. Now, there's something called destination sales tax. So in a lot of places, when you pay for your thing, the cashier says, what's your zip code? And they're collecting that because the sales tax is supposed to be paid to the jurisdiction where the good or service will be used. So I live in unincorporated county. I shop in Olympia, and any tax I pay to a store in Olympia should be credited to Thurston County because that's where I live, that's where I'm going to use the stuff. So it's kind of complicated, and some of that doesn't necessarily get to where it's supposed to go. But for the most part, it, it all lands up where it's supposed to. But if you, if you're in incorporated county spending your money, not, it doesn't all go to the unincorporated.
So a lot of people think that Costco and Home Depot or out in the county, because they drive by Tanglewild and Thompson Place and go down Martin Way, areas that are in the county. And then there's been annexations of the revenue-producing area into the city of Lacey.
That's true.
And those tax dollars, then, the majority of them go to Lacey, and the county ends up picking up the workload of the residential areas per se without the revenue stream to really provide that service. Is, is that a true statement?
I would, so I would say that the, the taxes paid in the incorporated area, most of it goes to the cities. And if the neighborhoods are in the unincorporated area, then yes, the county has to pay for services in those neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm good for now.
So that's true.
Just further clarification for the public on, where Commissioner Edwards was hitting. And that is, if somebody purchases a vehicle at the auto mall or from a Toyota of Olympia that's now in Tomwater, that is up to the, the business to report to the Department of Revenue where the purchase took place and/or where the buyer lives.
Right.
And I understand that's done by zip code. And I live in unincorporated Thurston County, but I have an Olympia zip code. And we've been talking about this all year long, that, and the Treasurer, Jeff Gadman, is going to be looking into, make sure these transactions are being reported properly because the county may be losing out on a significant amount of revenue, or tax dollar revenue.
Well, we've, we've found in the past, when we do the review, that it's about five thousand dollars per quarter.
That's it?
So it's not a lot. It's not a lot, but every penny counts. So yes, we do the review. But for the most part, I would say that the businesses in Thurston County are very good at making sure that those dollars go where they're supposed to.
And that, then, there's legislation that's being talked about, and that's regarding online or internet sales, and how that is reported then when we get all the packages on our front porch?
Right.
Because currently, we don't get, we don't receive revenue from that.
That's, it depends, it depends on the business.
Okay.
Because it has to do with, does the company have a physical presence in the state of Washington? So when you shop at Amazon, you pay state tax because Amazon lives in Washington State. There are other companies that don't, that you may shop at online, they don't collect the tax. Then it's voluntary if they have no presence in the state of Washington. That's what's getting redefined, is the definition of presence in our state.
And that's being defined at the state level here?
Absolutely, by the legislature, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, Roman.
Sure.
All right, that takes us to the next portion of this, which is the public comment. And so, with that, I'll ask if, is this the only time, sign up sheet, La Benita? And ask if Cynthia Stewart would like to come to the microphone and speak for three minutes, and you have the countdown.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Stewart. I live in unincorporated Thurston County. I am really concerned by the display that we just saw, and I'm glad that that will be online, so we have a chance to take a look at it in more details. What, what I hear there is that the expenditures far exceed the revenues anticipated, and the fund balances will be drawn down. What I'm concerned about is not just this year, but what comes. So every year, costs go up, but as you're drawing your fund balance down and your revenues and your expenditure gap increases, what are you going to do then? I think one thing that has not been discussed is the structural funding issue that counties have that cities don't have. About 2007 to 2008, the Department of Commerce, then the Department of Trade and Economic Development, did a study about county financing, and they, they described county funding as a two-legged stool. So the state and the cities have three legs, and the county only has two, the primary one being the property tax and the secondary one being the sales tax. The counties do not have authority like the cities do to have a BNO tax or utility tax. Those would actually, not so much the BNO tax, but their utility tax could have a significant impact on your general fund balance. So when you look at not only this year, but down the road, you, you have two choices. You've got to cut your expenditures, or you've got to increase your revenues. Other, there's just no other option. Back when the recession hit, the county had significantly decreased its expenditures. Public health services, park services, all kinds of things went down because there wasn't enough revenue anticipated. So my suggestion is that you have a conversation over the next year and include the legislature in this about increasing the revenue, getting authority. Consider asking the legislature to lift that one percent tax limit on the property tax, the annual increment that's prohibited. Consider asking for the utility tax. I know that none of you want to increase taxes. I know a lot of your constituents don't want to, but if they want police service, if they want these other things that we need, somebody's got to pay for it. So I'm very concerned, and I just wanted to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your words, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Not at this point.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion carries, and is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. We all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion also carries. We are adjourned.